Okay. We will call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, April 6, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed?
Yes. The Reporter of Deeds, March 2021 fees, and the County Curbs, March 2021 fees.
And I'd also like to -- the RACs, the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, their annual report and their budget for 2021 is submitted to you guys.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings.
We've got a mid-mo GIS Steering Committee meeting tomorrow. Coal County Chiefs Association meeting Thursday. I think Friday Coffee at the Chamber is Friday, surprisingly. Coal County Cattlemen's Association Dance Saturday at Lords of the Lines. You can get tickets at the door if you don't have them already. And quarterly reports are due next week, so I think that's about it.
Tomorrow, a meeting with Wall Street, our county health insurance providers to discuss next year. Jeff mentioned the mid-mo GIS Steering Committee meeting tomorrow. Vaccine site meeting tomorrow. 3:00 PM tomorrow. And then press conference with the County COVID update tomorrow. That's Thursday. Thursday, 9:00 AM.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to try to get out here for the dedication at 11:00 AM for our Edie Vogels. I have Williams Keepers tomorrow at 8:00. What time do you have?
1:30.
Oh, he's -- okay. Yeah, the walkthrough. Friday Phase 3 opens for vaccination. We're doing the second vaccinations over at the Wink. And then I'll be at the opening out at the mall on Monday. And then I've got a Cap Region Foundation meeting. So that's all I've got. We're going to jump around because we have Judge Beadham here. So his time is valuable. So discussion and signing of the Electronic Monitoring Service Agreement for the courts, is that?
We've got a couple of different things.
Okay.
Let's start with that one if you like.
Appreciate your time. It's actually two little cases that we've got sit where we're sitting on to get that done. I had sent over, I think, to Jill and to Debbie. Obviously, we're using a lot of electronic monitoring. You know, we're probably back here talking somewhere in the middle of the year saying we've used probably -- we're ahead of our budget. We need a device, an alcohol monitor, that's different than the one we have on our contract. The one we have in our contract is kind of like a breathalyzer, a portable breathalyzer. And I have a defendant who, for health reasons, can't make that work. On the other hand, this defendant's been arrested twice for driving while drunk, while out on bond. And so I'm trying to keep this person out of jail, get them to treatment, but I need this other monitor. It is my understanding that this is on the U.S. Communities contract, which... Okay. So it's just BI, which is the monitoring company, would like to make sure we promise to pay for any units that we lose. And this particular contract addendum actually had, my understanding from Richard Lee, has insurance of something would actually happen to it. It's just a different monitor. It's a SCRAM bracelet, so it doesn't require you to blow on it. It just monitors alcohol via skin contact. It's just an additional, different monitor than we normally use. And we would order it in for this particular defendant. So that's really where we came to this.
And there's different rates, I guess, on here per unit.
Yeah, I was going to say what?
Well, I know how many you're going to need of each.
I mean, this is the first time I've come across this, so I'm guessing I'm going to need one until I get this person into treatment where I'm, you know, where I've got them in either an inpatient treatment where I don't need to monitor them or I get their case resolved. I think ultimately, we'll probably get this person to DWI court. But I have to get the health issues under control, and then I have to keep them off the road. So that's what we're working there.
What's the cost difference between this and the regular monitor?
I think it's a couple bucks a day. I'm thinking that the regular electronic monitor's like $3.00 a day, $3.50 a day.
I know it's still cheaper than having them sitting in jail.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there's any of that we can pass on to them.
Well, I mean, we've been taxing those costs to the defendant. So at the end of the case, it's something that they're responsible for.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, but like I said, we've talked about this a month before, and it is still cheaper than having them sit in the jail and not getting anything for them later on, too.
Okay. So we need to sign them?
Yeah.
One motion. I'll make a motion to sign the Addendum Number 1 to the Electronic Monitoring Service Agreement, dash U.S. Communities, for the special alcohol monitor instrument.
Second.
All in favor? What's your other one, John?
The other one was, we had -- we were told to come back at the end of the quarter. I have an extra half FTE on the security guide. And then we've been billing Marshall Bimbo's time to COVID. And we'd like to continue that at least for another 90 days, if that's possible.
And that was the security guide system. We had -- you guys approved an addendum for March 31st, so that was over. He wants to continue it for another 90 days. And Jess, did you get an agreement with the vendor?
Hey, Charlie, we're -- I mean, we've got, who knows what it's going to be like? I mean, the Supreme Court authorized a Phase 4 to go to based on vaccine availability. We think that that date's going to be mid-May, based on talking with Kristi. But all it really does is change how we manage the offices. We still have to deal with social distancing and masks, so it doesn't really change the outside part of it. But these are two extra positions that we've identified as being necessary to work the COVID stuff.
We're using CARES money to pay for it.
But like I said, the request was we come back at the end of the quarter.
I have a motion to extend the extension Number 2, unarmed security guard services COVID-19. For 90 -- it's a 90-day extension to the existing contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Other than that, just a kind of a brief update. You know, we got another murder trial completed. So that's two down, 17 to go. And that's based on who I got in jail. When I looked at the electronic monitoring, 23 out of 30 were what I called the big three, murder, assault, first, or robbery. So we're not lacking for stuff to do. We had good turnout. I think I had 28 out of 30 on a panel with a jury. So that part of it's looking really well. I guess 75% of the courthouse staff have been vaccinated, which is everybody who wants to be vaccinated. So we're just, as soon as I get the prosecutor ready to go.
So we're open back up? We really don't have to worry about having people stand outside?
Well, no, no. See, we're still stuck with the social distancing. That's what causes the backup, is I can't cram 30 people in a courtroom.
Right, but I haven't noticed as many people standing on the courthouse lawn.
Well, we've worked really hard on moving people. We've worked with the new, you know, the new judges we have. And I have two new judges in Associate Division. Both, you know, which are high-volume dockets. We've worked on, you know, we would like to do your docket A through Z. It works really well for us, and that's the order that appears in our paper. But we're picking people out. We'll do Mr. Helscher, he's here. And then we'll do Mr. Bimbo, Mr. Bushman, because he's here. And then we'll do Mr. Otto, because he's here. But it took a while to get everybody oriented to doing that way, so we kept the people moving through the building. So the marshal staff, and that's where the extra, you know, the extra marshals come into play, is moving those people. We also brought the jury in through the annex, which we had talked about kind of as a rain option there, which really sped some stuff up in, you know, our jurors were not in the same line as the defendants. So the jurors kind of liked that part of it, too. So we appreciate the commission offering to do that, and we'll play with that some more.
Okay. Do you mind still an option if we need to use the walkway?
So we're looking at getting some temporary signage for those things like that, too, to help do that if we get a pouring rain day. But it really made a difference with the jury. And so we may continue to do that.
Okay. Are you sure we got the ball somewhere or something? Because I thought we kind of put the tent off and we were going to use the walkway.
Well, no, we were going to try that. And, you know, based on your offer for that. And then we've not had any pouring rain or lines outside yet. So we've, like I said, we've worked really hard on the choreography, for lack of a better word, to get people in and through the building. We moved the screening station down, which brought some more people in the building. And so we've not noticed the long lines.
Cool. All right.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we will still jump around because we've got BKD on there. We pay them.
Julie, we'll let you take over if you're ready.
I am going to turn it over to Teresa.
All right, Teresa.
Morning, everyone. I have a few funding recommendations for the March reporting to talk about. And then we'll just kind of quickly talk about closing out CARES and where that process is at as well. So the first four items on the funding recommendations are the kind of emergency expenses that have run through. So we've got some computer and technology things. I think that was for the Pringer Center. Some vaccine supplies and some storage to get that, I think that thermostat and things like that up to par to carry those cold vaccines. There was a barrier at the Recorder of Deeds and then some radios for the court to keep that social distancing. And then the last one was the Health Department payroll. This was for January and February's payroll. So we had kind of discussed how we were going to finish spending these funds. And that was kind of the route it seemed like everybody wanted to take. So we've gone ahead and taken the first January and February and plan to take some more in March when we get the final. So we couldn't quite close out in the end of March like we were hoping. I think we've got a couple stragglers from some of those internal projects that I know Kristin thinks she can get done by April 15th. So that's kind of our new date to jump to. But there's only a handful left that need to get closed out. So this is what we've got right now. Open to questions or if you want to go ahead and approve.
I don't have any questions.
Motion to approve D-10-16 of the CARES Act funding recommendations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So yeah, like I was saying, just we're going to have to go into April to go ahead and get these CARES funds closed out. So I know Kristin's working really hard to get those last few things. So as soon as we get all of that done, we'll go ahead and get that final report done. So we will have a report for April. But I think, based on my calculations, as far as actually reporting to the state, we have about $500,000 left that we need to report to the state. So that'll be a mixture of those internal orders and then whatever Health Department payroll we need to use to get that all the way spent.
Does anyone have any questions for Teresa?
So what's going to happen with the next round then? As far as, I know Jefferson City's supposed to get a large chunk and a lot of these small communities are going to get some, too. And I've talked to one of the mayors and he's kind of expressed interest in finding out how we're taking care of the auditing part of it and stuff, too. Should they contact BKD or is that something you could do? They could ride our coattails on this contract to help them with theirs, their spending, make sure they're in compliance and got all their ducks in a row, or at least in the same pond.
Be a separate agreement.
Julie, I'll let you answer that.
Yeah. So typically, for those types of engagements, we would want to have a separate contract. But, you know, I wouldn't expect the terms or anything to be significantly different. So, you know, if you just have them reach out to my email and then I'm happy to, you know, to set up a call and we can work with them. At this point, we're not expecting -- well, we are expecting some additional guidance, but we're also expecting, based on what we're hearing, that a lot of the, some of the rules and regulations that were pretty specific for CARES Act may be somewhat a little bit less restricted. So that's nice to hear. So our goal is to kind of give them through the first part of May and then what we'll do, maybe we could even do this on Tuesday, is just kind of give you some delineations of, you know, some of the high points of the current funding that will be coming your way and what that process looks like. We, at this point, we, I don't, we can go ahead and engage if you would like. As we mentioned, it would probably be for a six-month time period. And it could even be just the work order on top of the current engagement. It's just there's so many unknowns with the length of time to spend the funds until 2024. You know, we want to be sure that, you know, we do what's right for you all as well as for BKD. So if you all are ready, I can start working on the work order and we can present that to you all, you know, next week or the following.
Well, as far as the small communities, I can just have them reach out to you and consult with you and then you can see what's best for you then.
Yes, absolutely.
And us, I just thought they can get maybe a discount or something since, or if we get kicked back for referring them, right?
Commission, a commission?
I guess kickbacks are not too far. Okay. Well, thank you. That's what I'll do is I'll have them reach out to you and kind of see what.
Yeah. We'll make sure that they'll get a fair value for the purposes of that.
Yeah, and I, we don't know what Jeff City's going to do, so we don't want to speak for them. Have we heard any more about when this money is coming? I know it's two payments. Have we heard anything at all on?
I mean, the last we had heard, it was supposed to be in May, would be the first round.
Okay.
So we've actually not seen additional guidance at this point, but that's our expectation. So I think they're just working through some of the details. As soon as we do have those, you know, additional guidance, we'll pass that along.
Yes, please.
Yeah, and I know BKD has a training set up on April 20th. So hopefully, I think they're hoping that there's additional guidance by then that they can discuss, too. So I can send those links or we can just discuss what they talk about at a future commission meeting as well.
Yeah, we'll send those links to you, Debbie and Kristin, and for you to share. And then if you'd like to take, I mean, it's a free webinar.
Yeah, it's an hour.
I actually think I got that email this morning.
I have a quick question. And this is very, this is still a fluid situation going on. Is there any, you heard any discussion about an extension on the 12/31/24 date? No?
I haven't. Have you, Teresa?
No, I haven't heard anything about that. I think they'll probably, as we know from last time around, they don't make those decisions very quickly. So I think last time, our extension for the six months of the year, we got on December 20th. Our deadline was 12/30. So I'm guessing if the funds are not getting spent or if, you know, they're having issues with guidance or something, that's when those extensions would come into play. But I have not heard anything yet.
But I do think that's part of the goal in trying to relax a few of these requirements, is to try to get this money out, you know, as quickly as possible.
Do you guys have a date that you would like them to shoot for, for the work order or to the existing contract or redone?
Probably 30 days, something like that. Or just, well, we will wrap up, we will wrap up the existing one the next meeting, basically?
Well, it'll be after the 15th. So I do know I have a couple of invoices that will not be to us until the 15th. So we will not probably pay those until the 20th. So, I mean, I think you could shoot for end of the month when we wrap up the final report on CARES. Maybe we have that work order for the next one in the works.
It's reasonable, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Julie.
Yeah, we could start putting that through the works to kind of have it starting May 1st at a good date. I think that would give us enough time to work out any logistics there. That works for you all.
Yeah.
Okay. Ladies, I think that's it unless you have anything else.
No, you all have a great day.
You, too. Thank you.
Take care.
Go back to our agenda. Appointment by commission. Appointment of John Gulick to the Missouri River Regional Library Board. And so I think this fills the board, actually, but that needs a motion.
I'll offer a motion to appoint John Gulick to the Coal County, where are we? I'm sorry, the Missouri River Regional Library Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any commission comments? Okay. Bits and contracts. Just that one. So approval of sole source 2021-11, Zoll Medical?
This is just approval of the sole source. And we already ran it in the paper. It's for EMS, for their preventative maintenance on their ventilators and their battery programs.
I'm good with it.
I'm good, too.
And this was a contract that you guys signed last year. We just have to rerun it every year. So we don't need to call for approval for that. Is that correct? It's already been signed.
I'll offer a motion to execute the sole source with Zoll Medical Group preventative maintenance contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't need to sign it again?
It's already been signed through 2025. We just have to review this.
Okay. Uh, discussion of 2021-11 lawn care services.
We're just kind of coming to you guys for guidance to see what you guys want to do. We bid out the Sheriff's Department lawn care, but then we also just purchased that equipment for Greg. So we didn't know if you want to, what you guys wanted to do.
So we were advertising this one. Greg was shorthanded and before we approved the purchase of the equipment. And Greg's over at the Health Department working on inspections over there, so he's not here. But I think we all three talked to him at individual times and he's fine with still taking on doing the sheriff's area himself. So since he's fully staffed now.
And we spent $28,000 on equipment just recently, right?
Yeah. So I think, because I think he's even talking about he could do the Health Departments as well. So, yeah, I think we just need to let Greg and his people cut your grass.
All right. Okay. I don't have anything on it.
So we got, they're still doing the Health Department building. That's something we need to talk about, too. If we're going to continue to pay to have that done. And I don't know what the contract was on that. Is that something you can look up and find out? Because it's been a year.
There really wasn't a contract.
So we don't have to hand their dinner for free?
We can cancel it anytime.
Yeah, we can cancel it.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I think, are we looking at a piece of equipment the public works can use as well as our maintenance? So...
Well, we can wait till Greg's here. But in talking with him, he indicated that having full staffed and the new equipment, they can handle it. And I would think so.
Yeah.
So, and then we're also bidding out the cleaning part of it. So if we take that off their plate, that should.
It gives them a lot more time.
More time to do that stuff.
Yeah.
And that's just our goal with that one. If we're going to pay somebody else to do it, then we shouldn't be buying this equipment and, you know, hiring more people.
Do you want us to send that vendor a notice that we don't ever need their service?
Just verify with Greg?
Let's check with, yeah. Grab first to make sure.
That was my understanding this morning. And, you know, he's not here now to argue, so.
Yeah.
And then can I have you guys reject the bids on this one?
On the one that she?
On the lawn care.
On the lawn care, the Sheriff's Department. She did bid that out and we did receive a bid.
Yeah.
So if you guys could just reject that.
Okay. Make a motion where we reject the bids for lawn care for the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Coal County Abstract Amendment?
This is just an extension of the contract with Coal County Abstract for the lien entitle services. And they agreed to keep the pricing the same that they've had in previous years, and Larry's okay with it.
And this is for the annual tax sale. Right, Larry?
Correct.
And this is a one-year extension?
One-year extension.
I'll offer a motion to extend the current contract with Coal County Abstract Entitled Company for one year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Insta-MET agreement approval and signing.
What's that again? I think that's that.
Matt, Insta-MET agreement approval and signing.
Insta-MET.
There you go, Debbie. It's the thing that Digitech needed signed to do the direct deposit instead of...
Can you come back to that?
Okay. So we're not doing that now?
No, we're just going to wait a minute till they probably print it out.
Oh, okay. Okay, then we'll go to approval and signing of annual summer food service program inspections.
Good morning.
Morning.
So when our environmental staff get called out to do inspections of the summer feeding inspection sites where they have the free meals for kids during the summer, we get paid per inspection for those sites. And this is just an agreement. So if our staff do those inspections, we can bill DHSS for their time. I think it's like $80 for inspections, something like that. So that's all, agree with DHSS.
All right. You got the agreement?
Yes.
I don't think we added a test, so.
No, Jill did review it.
Harry's been on fire. Okay.
Here. Here, here, here.
I'm going to put my glasses on. All right, make a motion. We approve the Summer Food Service Program Inspection Participation Agreement with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, new business, Accounts Payable Review.
I'd ask for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we did the discussion of CARES Act. That was John's, right?
Yes.
And we're going to table the EMS hourly work hours worked. So then we need the sole source ad approval, Stryker Pro Care Services.
I just need approval to run this in the paper. It's for EMS. It's their preventative maintenance on their CPR devices.
A motion to approve the sole source ad for Jamar Tech.
Oh, wrong one.
Wrong one?
Or Stryker.
I'm sorry. Sole source ad approval for Stryker Pro Care Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going back to...
Well, you got another one for sole source.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, we will do the approval for Soul Source, Soul Source ad for Jamar Tech.
So... Go ahead.
Public Works, that's just for their traffic counters. Eric, we'll talk about them.
We have to replace some of our traffic counters this year, and we want to use the same company, just so the old ones can work with the new ones, and the software's the same, so, and this company is the only one that manufactures a certain type that we use, which is Jamar Technologies.
Motion to approve the Soul Source ad for Jamar Tech.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hey, Eric, stick around for a minute, we'll go to a close session.
Now we are back to Matthew.
So the Insta-MET, that's just for us to be able to get payments through Digitech on some of the payers who are using that system, and we just need approval so that payment can come that way.
You got the agreement?
Aye, I gave it to...
Oh, you already gave it to him.
I did, to Strato.
I'll offer a motion to approve the Insta-MET agreement and sign the Insta-MET agreement for EMS.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think that is it. Do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
I think we're tabling that.
Anything else?
Okay.
I'll offer a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri to discuss the following: responses to bids and negotiated contracts, Section 610.021, per N12, closed per N, and legal actions under Section 610.021, per N1, closed per N.
Second.
Roll call.
Eric.
Aye.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And my understanding, we're gonna go into closed session, and we're gonna come out of closed session, so we...
After we're done, we're gonna need to come back and open session.
Would you like to be first?
Contract.
Okay. Okay, we are back in session, April 6, 2021.
I have a motion to offer, this motion is to accept the agreement in the matter of Amber Dinkle versus Cole County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a motion that we adjourn.
Recede.
Recede and adjourn at 4:30 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Sam, do you sign this agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I will, yes.
And so then I don't need, I don't need Kristen to sign off, but I need Steve to sign, to attest to Sam's signature. And then you need Donna.